I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting February 9, 2021, 7:00 PM. This is a web-based meeting. First on our agenda is a public hearing for Victoria Heron, Tracy Castello, Site Plan 8-30G, additional five units, total of 11 units, 28 South Street. And I'll read the public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on February 9, 2021, at 7:00 PM, using the virtual platform Zoom to hear the application of Tracy Castelli/Victoria Heron LLC for an affordable housing application under Section 8-30G of the Connecticut State Statute. The proposal is for 11 units to be located at 28 South Street. The property can be found in the Tax Assessor's Office as Map 22, Block 21, Lot 7. The public may send comments via regular mail and email at landuse@bethel.gov. Comments must be received 24 hours prior to the hearing in order to be included. This is Zoom meeting again. Pat Riss, Chairman. So we're ready to go to the public hearing.
If I may, Chairman, members of the Commission, for the record, Neil Marcus, Tona Wolf, PC 158 Deer Hill Avenue in Danbury. And I'm here on behalf of the... I'm just saying I've got to take another meeting out of here. Good. I'm on the ZBA in Brookfield on one device and your commission on another device because your meetings are both starting at 7 o'clock tonight.
Good job, Neil.
I'm a little distracted.
Good, half right.
I'm impressed.
The old days when you had to come in person to these meetings, you couldn't do this. You either had to go to Bethel or Brookfield. You couldn't be in two towns at the same time. But anyway, the modern world. The application that's before you this evening, we filed on behalf of Tracy Castelli. And it involves a, in addition to an existing property on South Street. And it's a 28 South Street. And the proposal is to add some additional housing units under 8-30G. And the property itself is probably known to all of you. I mean, it's a street that you would go down quite often in Bethel. It's the five units that we're going to add will be under, as I say, under 8-30G. And we've given you a proposed affordability plan, which is similar to others that we have used in the town of Bethel. The format is somewhat the same. But I think rather than spending a lot of time talking about what we're planning to do, I'm going to ask Steve Trinkus, who's on the call, I see him here, to take you through the actual site plan. And then we'll get back and answer any questions. If that's... Steve, are you there?
Yeah, yes, I am, Neil. Thank you. Steve Trinkus.
You'll take it. Thank you.
I'm the licensed professional engineer with an office in Southbury, representing Tracy Castelli. Beth or David, could you give me share screen, please?
Mr. Trinkus, screen sharing is enabled for you, sir.
Thank you. We'll start with this one. Can everybody see the Google image?
No.
Yes, now.
Yes, okay. 28 South Street is kind of in the center here. South Street is to the north of it. The big white building is Carol Lucy's Market. And Greenwood Avenue is just north of that. We have the cemetery kind of on the left-hand edge of the plan, the firehouse. There's an existing house that condominiums were added to, just to the west of 28 South Street. And we have other condominiums that are also located to the east of the site. So I'm going to...
Hey, Steve?
Yeah?
My screen is doing something crazy here. It's got some Google add-on and Microsoft Outlook add-on.
Oh, mine doesn't.
Okay, well, I'm done with Google. I'm going to share some, another plan, so we'll go that route. This is the existing conditions survey done by New England Land Surveying. Surveyors like to put the roads on the bottom of the map, whereas I like to keep the North Arrow going up. So I apologize that they're basically 180 degrees opposite from the site plans. South Street here is on the bottom of the page. We have the existing dwelling. There is a 10-foot-wide concrete driveway that comes up to a parking area. And then we have a lightly wooded area at the southern end of the site. To the south end of the site is Overlook Park, which is open space in the town of Bethel. The existing house is served by sewer, water, and gas from existing lines in South Street. And we will be tapping off of those lines as part of the project. So now to go into the actual site development plans. The site utilities plan, or existing utilities come in from South Street and then serve the house. The water comes directly in through the front yard to the existing house. Sewer and gas come up just off the edge of the driveway and then make a 90-degree turn to serve the building. We will be extending those lines from that point to the new building, which is located south of the parking area. We're going to be expanding the parking area to provide additional spaces. We'll be bringing a new water service line in up the driveway to the new building. Obviously, a 10-foot-wide driveway is not an adequate driveway. The house is located at the closest point, just over 21 feet from the property line. Along the eastern sideline of the driveway is a 3- to 4-foot-high existing retaining wall between this property and the property to the east. So we're going to widen the driveway out to 20-foot, right where we're adjacent to the building. And then it will widen out to 22-foot as it heads north towards South Street. We will be removing one maple tree, but we have to widen it with the curve return to allow the fire, an emergency vehicle, fire truck primarily, to make the turn coming in if it's coming up from the west. There's a total of 20 parking spaces here, 9 by 18, with a 24-foot aisle conforming to the Bethel regulations. The units are kind of in a barn-like building. They're all one-bedroom units. We'll have parking, we'll have a sidewalk and building entrances. And behind the building, as it's relatively level, we're going to have a 10-by-10 patio at that location. So from a stormwater standpoint, we went out, we dug a couple test pits on the right-hand side of the existing house in the open lawn area. We actually found, somewhat to my surprise, bottomless sand, basically, down to 97, 98 inches deep. There was about 11 to 12 inches of topsoil and then pure sand all the way down to that. There was no ledge, no water, no modeling, extremely suitable soils for infiltration. So the stormwater management system consists of a new catch basin in the corner of the parking. We're going to be pitching the parking from the southeast corner to the northwest. There'll be a short length of pipe to outlet protection and basically a bio-retention system in the lawn area. And this will be planted, it could be grassed, it could be native plants. Tracy is a landscape architect. We've provided one sample type of planting, but she will pick what she likes in here. It is three foot deep in total, which is generally deeper than we make bio-retention systems. However, in these soils, they're so highly permeable, we can have a greater ponded surface. Infiltration tests that we did these locations were on the range of 10 to 14 inches per hour, which are very, very fast. Per the DEP manual, we're taking a 50% factor of safety. So we used four inches per hour to model the bio-retention system for all of the storm events. And basically, we will provide zero increase from the water quality storm, which is one inch of runoff in 24 hours, all the way up through the 100-year storm. We did provide a level spreader with a concrete lip for an overflow pipe in the event this ever fills up. Based on the infiltration rates here and other ones I've done in similar soils, no water will ever go to this level spreader. It will simply fully infiltrate through the bottom of the bio-retention system because the soils are so well-drained. On this sheet, we also have watershed maps. And there have been some comments by Wright Pierce, which we will all address for a continued public hearing. I'm sure I didn't skip a sheet here. No, okay. So we have a detail sheet with all of our construction details, you know, stop sign at the end of the driveway, erosion control measures, et cetera. There were some comments from Public Utilities from Tom Villa about the water line, and I will reach out to Tom specifically to go over them. We have a construction narrative with long and short-term maintenance requirements for the bio-retention system. They're actually very easy to maintain, particularly in well-drained soils such as this. We have a landscape plan, again, landscaping along the front of the building, some trees around the perimeter of the parking, and some low Ballard lights along the sidewalks and then along the parking where there's existing steps to go to the existing house. There will be no pole lamps here, you know, as the Ballards will be ample to light up the parking area because it is relatively small, all things being equal. We showed vehicle turning movements for the aerial fire truck on the last sheet, coming in from the west, which is the tighter turn coming in. And you know, Tom Galliford asked us to show that we can make a three-point turn here, which we will do and provide an updated plan. Similarly, a garbage truck can come in. The dumpster is located straight at the end of the driveway, so he can come in, pick it up. If he needs to, he can make a three-point turn in the parking lot, or he can back out. But since the dumpster is located back here now, he drives in, I believe picks it up. He does his turn because the parking lot is pretty empty and leaves driving out instead of backing out. Again, you know, it's a fairly simple plan. There's really not a lot of grading being done here. The stormwater is ideal. Your regulations do encourage lid. And this is a site that lid is absolutely appropriate because of the soil conditions on the site. And in the stormwater report, which we provided, you know, all the way up through the 100-year storm, I have repercussions and runoff. And reality, there won't be a discharge from this site because of the highly permeable soils that we have here. So that's really the applicant's presentation. We do have comments from, as I said, Wright Pierce, Tom Galliford, and Tom Villa. Beth, I did not see any of your comments. I just looked on the Google Drive before logging in. But if you can get those to us, we will, you know, address those for a continued public hearing. All of the comments are easily addressable and will provide the requested information.
Stephen, it's Pat. Do you have a copy of the request from Charles Halas' attorney?
Oh, yes. Oh, excuse me. Thank you, Pat, for bringing that up. Yes. Neil Marcus called me the end of last week and asked me to call the owner, John. And I don't want to butcher his last name, but I spoke with John today. And let me actually, this is an important point. John's property is what's called Bethel Capital here. It's west of our site. Going back to the existing conditions map, you can see from where my mouse is here at the 440 contour line, going up kind of in a southeast direction, there is actually a saddle that goes up and eventually goes... It kind of peters out on our property, but there's a drainage area that comes down from Overlook Park. This runoff doesn't go towards the driveway and the parking area on Tracy's property, but goes directly onto John's property. In speaking with John today, I told him that the grading we were doing actually would prevent that from occurring because we're directing the water towards our parking lot. But what I made a modification to the plan, which will show up on the revisions, where the little ridge line right here, I'm going to extend further to the north. I'm going to extend the next contour down a little bit. And right here, adjacent to the building, we're going to put a yard drain in so that we pick up all of that overland flow that's off-site. It's about 27,000 square feet, a little over half an acre of drainage area in a yard drain. And that will be piped directly to the level spreader system. So we will significantly reduce the amount of water that goes onto John's property, but there will be no additional water going onto his property at all. I sent Attorney Marcus an email to that effect, and I believe he forwarded to Attorney Halas earlier this afternoon.
Thank you. Neil, what else would you like to present on this?
Neil might be at the other meeting. I'll just ask.
I was just going to say that.
Since, before Steve leaves, let me just ask a quick question, Steve, in regards to your last comment. When you say it's going through the level spreader system, do you mean it's going through the bio-retention system? Or is it bypassing that?
No, no. Well, the runoff from off-site, Beth, is going to bypass the bio-retention system. I will look at the hydrologic model. If I can direct it to the catch basin and the bio-retention system can handle it, I will put it in there. But the level spreader is a stone-filled trench in that same sand. So we're still going to get the infiltration. But I don't need to detain the off-site water because it's naturally occurring and actually doesn't drain through 28. It goes next door.
Right. But the level spreader's purpose is to just take runoff by the bio-retention system.
Right, right now, but it can accept the other water because it's in that well-drained soil.
And again, that's an engineering issue or comment. And I think that's better addressed between you and Wright Pierce.
Yeah, we'll be providing revised plans for Barry's review and a written memo to address his other comments, so.
All right, very good.
And that's really it, you know, as far as the applicant has. I guess, you know, as Neil said, there's six units in the house. This is five units. The property to the east of us, there's a house, I believe, with apartments. There's also more of a carriage-style barn on that property. We kind of looked at that, but it really didn't fit the program of what we were trying to do here. Would have been nice to kind of do a matching carriage house barn to match the Victorian house, but it wasn't practical.
I think she only has one apartment in that carriage house, and she's got one on the third floor.
Yeah, I don't know how many she has. It's a nice building, though, you know. So, but again, this is, you know, most of this building is behind the existing house and, you know, up the driveway. And, you know, you're not going to see, it's, you know, only... We have, we did submit, our architecturals are all one-bedroom units. So it's a fairly low building. It's not an apartment building, so.
If you want, I'll just speak a little bit, Neil, unless Neil's back. No, okay. I will put more comments in writing. But first of all, I think it's important to just go over a few things. One is that Ms. Castelli has made a lot of improvements to this property over the years. I don't know if you all remember what it looked like maybe 10 years ago compared to now. A lot of the restoration, the architecture's been maintained. And she also is the owner of 253 Greenwood Avenue, where recently she had purchased that and demolished the small barn in the back and put up a little barn. It's in the TOD zone. She followed all the TOD rules and regulations, and it came out a very, very beautiful-looking building. And I think she should be commended for the work that she's done in regards to that. One thing about this particular property I want to mention is that it is directly within one block of the TOD zone. It's located within a very walkable area of the downtown area connected by sidewalks. The use of low Ballard light, Ballard lighting is excellent. I believe that it's unfortunate because I think it would have been a lot more smoother if we had had a pre-application meeting with the property owner. I was surprised when I didn't hear from her because we could have tweaked a lot of the little things that I think are important in regards to this property. I also think it would be better because my biggest difficulty, and I did mention this to Steve in a conversation we had, is taking very small properties. Somebody's got a terrible microphone problem going on. Anyways, when you're dealing with properties in the downtown area, yes, the Commission over the years is commended for doing a lot with small structures and using the rain gardens and things of that nature on smaller lots because they do work, and we are a big proponent of that. My concern is that when you're taking this size of property and putting in bio-retention system, when I look at Wright Pierce's comments in regards to that, I'm a little bit concerned. In the beginning, I did feel very strongly that it should be a stormwater system underground, again, because you're using a lot of the property for a bio-retention system and eliminating some of the green space associated with the house. But again, I think it's dealing more with engineering principles, and I will defer to our engineers to work that out with Steve if it can be worked out. But overall, I think that there should be a little bit of tweaking with the architecture, and I would be more than happy to work with the applicant on that. And only because of our past relationship. And that's about all I really want to get into as far as this evening. The other thing that I may want to suggest to the Commission is that, depending on the weather, if it is at all possible, you may want the bio-retention system staked out a little bit so you can see where it falls in relation to the retaining wall that's located on the adjacent property and the house itself. So you can get an idea of the size of the system, even though I know it's very shallow. I think that would be helpful for you. The other thing for newer members of the town of Bethel and members of the Commission is when you look at what's adjacent, directly adjacent to this property, close to the fire department, you have an old Victorian house with, I don't even know how many units are attached to that. And you'll see several other up and down the street. They were done under, in the early '70s, there was a regulation called the Planned Building Group. That was the town of Bethel's first attempt to try to develop a regulation for more condensed housing, feeling that it should be located downtown. They were looking for ways to condense the housing, but also make allowances for open space. And it's obvious by looking at the adjacent property that it didn't work out the way that they wanted it to work out. So they eliminated it. But in, so since the, how many years that's been, 40 or 50 years, you all have come to that point where you have developed regulations the best you can to try to make things more compatible, but increase density on properties. I think that you all should be commended for the work you've done with the TOD. And I do feel that we can work with the property owner and try to come to some good conclusions.
Thank you, Beth.
Pat, if I can just address a couple of Beth's comments. Beth, as soon as you have your written comments, you can send them to me, especially regarding architecture. Now, I'll get them to Tracy, you know. So as soon as we have any comments, we'd be happy to take a look at them.
Sure. And, you know, like I said, I've worked with the property owner before, and I'd be very happy to have a conversation with her.
Okay, Beth, even though we're going to continue this meeting, shall we reach out to the public this evening for any...
Absolutely.
Okay. Then we will do that. We'll now reach out to the public. David, if you want to explain the raise-your-hand option here for them to use?
Certainly, I'll do that very briefly. In the instance that you have participated in a public meeting before, but the planning is only commissioned, the procedure's the same. But for those that are new, if you're using the desktop or a mobile phone, you will click on the participants icon at the bottom of the Zoom application itself. It's a tab that appears by bringing your cursor over it or bringing your thumb over the bottom of the screen. Clicking that participants tab brings up the list of attendees in this meeting. You will click next to your name. An option, a blue box will appear for you to raise your hand. If you are participating in this meeting by a mobile phone, you will press star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. Pat, at this time, I'm seeing only one person that has their hand raised, and that appears to be Alejandro Mateo.
Good evening, everybody. Just a few questions. I mean, I'm new to this neighborhood, to the town, so.
Alejandro, we just need your address, please.
20 South Street.
Thank you.
Unit 6.
Thank you. Continue with your questions.
So basically, based on this and reading a little bit about the specifications, how's this going to affect the zoning on this area? Based on this will be used primarily for Section C, Section A, affordable housing.
Pat, I'd be more than happy to answer that.
Sure.
Number one, sir, that when we talk about affordable housing, you're talking about 30% of the units meeting a certain level of income. You're not talking about creating public housing where all the units are for low-income or low-income tenants. It is a mixture of all types of income levels. And as far as the zoning in this particular area, if you're at 20 South Street, you're across the street or you're on the same side? You're in a condominium, I believe.
Right. It's condos.
Condos. And on this particular side of the street, the majority of the units up to and include the firehouse, they are multi-residential units containing either apartments or condominiums. And it has been that way for a long time. I will tell you, the opposite side of the street where Carol Lucy's is, the driveway is, was recently in for some redevelopment purposes. And part of that redevelopment, it was felt to keep those particular lots, single-family residential homes, and it recently had an approval to do that, if that's helpful.
Yes, I mean, because my biggest concern is that, obviously, to lose some value on the properties because of that. So just if you can explain a little bit more about that, it would be very helpful.
Hey, as far as values on your property, that's not something that we can explain. We don't have anything to do really with real estate value. And that would have to be done by you reaching out to a real estate person yourself, if you can find one that'd be willing to speak to you about the value of your property. I personally feel that, you know, South Street, there have been some good improvements made to that particular area versus how some of those developments came to be in the early '70s, and no offense to wherever you live. But the preservation of single-family homes and making use of some of the rear of the properties for better, I would call better development, like the old house next to this with the carriage house in the back, doesn't hurt someone's investment in their own property. And the reason I feel that is because of the amount of investment that the property owner makes into the property to develop these type of carriage houses and things of that nature. Not a follow building going out up in the backyard.
No, yeah.
Not similar to the firehouse.
That was the answer that I was looking for, this last part. So I think that terrifies a lot. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. David, are you seeing anyone else?
Not at this time. I'll give a reminder again. You would use the participants tab to find a list of names. And you would click next to your own name, the raise hand button. And that lets us know that you have public comment you would wish to offer to the Commission, pound, or excuse me, star nine on your phone, if you're participating by phone, also raises your hand. But I'm not seeing anyone else at this time.
Thank you, David. Then we'll move on to Commission members. I have no questions at this time.
Before you do that, Pat, excuse me, I'm sorry, but I see... There he is. Neil, Neil, are you there?
Oh, he's on mute.
No, I'm back, yes.
Okay, so we just, just to round it up, we just finished going through with Steve. I just made a few comments. The general public have spoken. Do you have anything that you want to add to the public hearing? Do you have anything that you want to add to the public hearing? We're going to be continuing.
Yeah, I have nothing further to add at this point. I mean, basically, we owe you some, some information, as Steve has said, which we'll provide to you. But other than that, I think we'll wait until we continue it and put it all together at once.
Thank you, Neil. All right, Kitty.
The only thing I would ask, if Mr. Trinkus wouldn't mind. In looking at the maps, I can't tell if there's any green area going to be available to the tenants of the apartments. If you could show me, if you could show me on the map, I'd appreciate it next time.
Well, I can address it now, actually, Kitty. The front yard of the property is open lawn area and that will remain open with the sidewalk that comes in from South Street. Right behind the building, before the slope gets a little steeper, this will all be a lawn area back here also.
Could you show me a picture? I mean, there would seem to be a large area on the side.
Well, the side is where the bio retention system is, but that will also be green area. I have done bio retention systems where we sod them. We don't plant them with native plants. And basically, they, they remain part of your yard, but when it rains, it's a stormwater management feature. So that, that will be all green also there, so.
Thank you. So for right now, that's all I have. Until you start answering all the rest of the questions from the.
John.
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, John. Penny.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ken.
Will we be getting a general rendering?
Can you have, there are architectural plans that were submitted in PDF and printed format, so those should be in the Google.
They're in the Google Drive.
They are in the Google Drive.
Okay.
Bob Legner.
One question I had, this report from Wright Pierce. That's what you're referring to? You have to get together with the other engineers and get back to us with answers of any of their questions.
Yeah, Bob, we're going to address all of his comments.
Okay.
So we'll make some minor tweaks to the plan with a response.
Two, three, twenty-one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and Tommy Gallifer about to, you have to get back, you've got to get back to, to be okay with your your, your plan also, right?
Right, and Tom Villa of the, you know, Public Utilities Director. So, you know, we're going to address all of the technical comments.
And, and the driveway, as far as the driveway, driveway will be right up against the retaining wall or there's enough space there to?
It, it's already right up against the retaining walls. We're maintaining that edge, Bob. And we're widening it out to the west towards the house. It's already right at the base. There's a curve and then the retaining wall, so it's right there.
But when you widen it, you're coming closer to the house then, I believe, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Rob Stoll.
I have no other questions at this time.
Thanks, Rob. Linda.
Nothing right now, thank you.
All right, and I think that is all of us. So Beth, we're continuing this to what, hearing?
The twenty-third?
I think it's the twenty-third, Pat.
It's our next meeting.
To our next regular meeting.
Okay, regular meeting, okay, perfect. All right, then, this public hearing has been continued to February twenty-third. Next on our agenda, commission initiated amendment to the zoning regulations. Section three dot three dot C adds section eight, allowing accessory apartments to be issued under a zoning permit. Section three dot three dot D three, eliminate the special permit requirement for an accessory apartment. Beth, do you want to talk to these?
Yes, in regards to these regulations, in regards to the changes that we're proposing, it's very basic. Every year, when you have received these public hearings for a special permit for an accessory apartment, we've discussed about making a change, making it an administrative matter, not something that has to go before the Planning and Zoning Commission with a public hearing and people that have no land use experience. We want, you know, we want to make it as simple as possible for people to have accessory apartments in Bethel. The only time that, by the change in the regulation, making it a zoning permit only, not a planning and zoning special permit, the only time that you would review anything, it would be like under a planning and zoning officials' report. And it would deal with parking and size. It's not, again, bringing the resident in to discuss this with you. We would have a very brief conversation. You would help make the determination, yes, the parking arrangements are fine, or yes, the size is appropriate and it meets the nature of the regulations, the spirit of the regulations. And that's basically it.
What do you need from us on this? Anything?
I would, I, I don't, I don't know if anyone from the public wishes to speak in regards to it. But, you know, basically, our accessory apartment regulations, there's two requirements with them. They are allowed in every zone within the town of Bethel, with the exception of the double R ten zone. All of our residential zones, our single-family residential zones, excuse me. And they are, they've been in existence for many years now and they work, in my opinion. And they also have an eight thirty G component to it. So I, I think it's time to move them back into the regulations by a department overview.
All right, is there anyone in the public that has a comment or wants a question to this?
Peter Olson would, but for some reason, I don't have the option to electronically raise my hand. So I'm actually raising my hand.
Okay, Peter.
I just wanted to express my support for the amendment. I think it's a great thing. People who are looking to put accessory apartments in are usually doing it for an elderly family member who's coming to live with them. And they've already have huge expenses associated with the construction required to make the accessory apartment work. And I think that the special permit requirement means they need a survey. They need engineers sometimes, they need architecture, they need a lot more things to present to you than they would need to present to the zoning official. And not to mention, sometimes they have to hire lawyers. My one comment is what Beth noted about the current language of the regulation has two provisions that say something like unless the commission modifies, and those should just be tweaked to say, you know, upon referral to the commission, the commission modifies. So that it doesn't imply that you need a special permit to change the parking or the size requirements. Thank you. I do have one client who's ready to go, so.
We're going to be going into executive session in a few minutes, Peter, as soon as we're done with this hearing. I'm sorry.
Beth, do you need a motion from us to move forward on this or this is simply now complete?
No, what you, you would do is close the hearing, if there's no one else out there that wants to speak.
All right, then this portion is closed on this commission-initiated amendment to the zoning regulations. Moving on, we're going to our business meeting. And I'm going to seat Linda for Rich Tibbetts. I don't see that he's joined yet. So has everyone had an opportunity to read the meeting minutes of January twenty-sixth? If so, if someone would be kind enough to make a motion.
You approve in a minute.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
I need to hear voices.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Next is our work session. DeMarco Site Plan Special Permit Mixed Use Development, one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue.
At the last meeting, you asked the department to put together two resolutions for discussion this evening. I believe that they are in the Google Drive, but I did email them to you today and remind you that it's two resolutions that they are looking for. One is for a special permit to reduce the parking requirement. And the second item was to approve a site plan.
All right, if someone would be kind enough to offer a motion for the special permit?
I'll make a motion to approve a special permit under section six, two, D three of the Bethel zoning regulations for reduction in the parking on the property located at one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue. Stephen DeMarco assessors map twenty-two, block thirty-two, lot four in the TOD overlay VC zone. Except as modified herein, the project shall be constructed in accordance with plans entitled Stephen T. DeMarco, one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue, Bethel, Connecticut, prepared by Artel Engineering LLC. Then Dynas L. Verbicis PE dated nine sixteen twenty, last revised one twenty-one twenty-one. Architectural drawings prepared by Nexus Architects Planning Design dated one twelve twenty-one. Last revised one twenty-one twenty-one and landscaping prepared by A two Land two Consulting LLC dated eleven eighteen twenty, last revised one seven twenty-one. The following stipulations shall apply. The special permit is granted under section six, two, D three of the zoning regulations for a reduction in parking for the commercial component to zero and the residential component from thirty-two to twenty-seven spaces. To, to become effective, the special permit shall be filed on the land records of the town clerk's office. A copy of the filed permit shall be submitted to the planning and zoning department. Reasons, the commission has carefully reviewed the application, listened to testimony, engaged the applicant in a substantive discussion and has determined that the proposed parking rate reduction meets the criteria under section six, two, D three of the Bethel zoning regulations constructed as approved. The project will not be a detriment to health, safety, welfare of the neighboring properties within the TOD district or the town of Bethel.
Second.
Sorry, who did the second?
Kitty.
Kitty.
Thank you, Kitty. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries.
Ask for abstaining. Any abstentions? I say, because we're not listing names. So it's I, any, any abstentions?
I did.
Oh, okay. Or no's. Any no's? Okay.
No, no no's. Moving on, next motion will be for one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue site plan. If someone would be kind enough to make the motion.
I approve a site plan for eighteen residential units. I move to approve a site plan for eighteen residential units and approximately forty-one hundred square feet of commercial space within five acres located at one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue, proposed by Stephen T. DeMarco. The property is located on the assessors' records as map twenty-two, block thirty-two, lot oh four, in the TOD overlay VC zone. Except as modified herein, the project shall be constructed in accordance with plans entitled Stephen T. DeMarco, one fifty-five Greenwood Avenue, Bethel, Connecticut, prepared by Artel Engineering Group LLC, Dynas L. Verbicis PE, dated nine sixteen twenty, last revised one twenty-one twenty-one. Architectural drawing prepared by Nexus Architecture Planning Design dated one twelve twenty-one, last revised one twenty-one twenty-one and landscaping prepared by A two Land Consulting LLC dated eleven eighteen twenty, last revised one seven twenty-one. Do I need to read all the stipulations?
One, two, one. No, you can say stipulations, one through. Whatever.
So following stipulations, that would be numbers one through thirteen shall apply. Reasons, the commission has carefully reviewed the application, listened to testimony, engaged the application in substantive discussion and has determined the proposed use of the property for residential purposes is in accordance with the zoning regulation and conforms to the TOD criteria outlined in section five, eleven H and section five, eleven J of the zoning regulations. If constructed as approved, the project will not be a detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighboring properties, district or the town of Bethel.
Thank you, Penny. If I may have a second, please?
Okay.
Thank you, Bob. Is there any discussion?
Hearing none? Yes. I just have a couple of questions.
Sure.
To Beth, Beth, there are a couple of grammatical things. There are periods missing, there are spaces that shouldn't be and.
That's me.
That should be, okay.
Nancy's on vacation, so if you just go through and you give me that red line, I would truly, truly appreciate it.
It would be my delight.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. There's no discussion. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We look forward to this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Pat, we have our attorney with us this evening. He is on the board. So if you want to, whatever, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I think the next item pertaining.
There's something on here that doesn't belong because. Regulation amendment accessory apartment?
That's for later on in discussion. If you guys want to adopt the regulation, you can do it under that.
Okay. All right, so then we'll move on to going into executive session. The Planning and Zoning Commission will hold an executive session to discuss pending litigation. Oakwoods LLC and Timothy Draper versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Bethel. I'd like to invite into our executive session Beth Kabegna, Nancy LaBelbo, Dave McCollum and attorney Charles Andrus. And if I may have a second, please?
Is Beth coming in?
Yeah, I said that.
Oh, you did say that, okay.
I'm sorry, who did the second?
I did, Kitty.
Thank you, Kitty. All right, and during executive session, the general public will not be allowed to attend.
We're recording.
Did you vote to get out of executive session?
They're going to do it right now. Make the motion to come out of executive session.
I move that we come out of executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstention, motion carries.
Okay.
All right. I want to enter into the record the following announcement. As the public is aware, at its meeting on December fourteenth, the commission denied the application by Oakwoods LLC Timothy Draper to construct a large residential building for eleven units located on number nine Good Hill Road. The applicant has appealed the decision under General State Statute eight dash thirty G, the Affordable Housing Appeals Act, and that appeal remains pending. Also, December fourteenth, the commission denied a site plan application for the construction of nine units in four separate buildings at forty-seven Shelley Road. The applicant has filed a modified application for this site for eight units. And that application remains pending. Both the original and modified application were filed under General State section eight dash thirty G, the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. Following our denial and the filing of the appeal and the modified application, the developer approached the commission regarding settlement of the existing appeal for Good Hill Road that would involve both a less dense development of Good Hill Road and the town acquisition of the property at Shelley Road. After negotiations with the developer and consulting with our attorney, it is the consensus of the commission to recommend approval of the settlement of both of these matters, subject to hearing further comment from the public and further actions by other town authorities. The general terms for the settlement are as follows. Nine Good Hill Road. There will be a reduction of units from eleven units in one building to six units contained in two buildings, three units per building. Two of the units will be affordable under the eighty percent rule. There are many components involved with this proposal that will develop over time. As the recommended settlement progresses, it is important for the general public to know that there will be a public hearing held in regard to the above. A site plan will be fully developed and reviewed with the applicant as we progress. Shelley Road, it is the consensus of the Planning and Zoning Commission to recommend to the town of Bethel that the best use of the property is for open space because it is contiguous to two other properties and agree to contribute two hundred thousand dollars from the open space account toward the purchase. It is important for the general public to know that there will be many opportunities for public input with regard to the above recommendation to the town of Bethel by the Planning and Zoning Commission and multiple town agencies involved with the process. Beth, you're on, you're on mute. Beth, you're on mute.
Thank you, Pat. I think that covers everything pertaining to the executive session for this evening. Chuck, I'd like to think, is there anything, Chuck, that we need to address at this time?
I don't think so, Beth. I can follow up with you on some details and timing issues tomorrow.
Okay, very good. Chuck, thank you again very much for all the work that you've done pertaining to this, these two particular items on our agenda. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, Chuck. All right, moving on, Planning and Zoning Official Report?
I have nothing to report because I've just been working all the time.
Commission comment?
Oh, weren't we doing something with the regulations first?
Yeah, let's, do you want to do the...
Oh, I apologize. We have to back up to the Regulation Amendment Accessory Apartment Work Session.
So you have the amended accessory, blah, 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 regulation in front of you. And the question is, if you are comfortable with it, my suggestion would be that if you want to adopt it, to adopt it tonight and make it effective February 20th. That would be 10 days.
Do this by a motion, Beth?
If you want to make a motion to, to, yes.
All right, if I may have a motion, please?
I'd like to make the motion to, to accept the new accessory apartment regulations as as written here. Section C, what section is it? Just Section C?
Oh, there's a couple of sections. I'm sorry.
Section 3.3(c) adds Section 8 allowing accessory apartments to be issued under a zoning permit. Section 3.3(c)(3) eliminates the special permit requirement for an accessory apartment.
I'm sorry, it's up here. No, it's not up there.
Kitty, I can, I can clean it up.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
That was it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Penny.
Yeah, and I'm really glad that this has happened because I think, as Peter noted too, for the public, this is a much better thing. You know, they're paying out a lot of money to do this for their families.
Yeah. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. So then, moving on, commission comments?
Did we, did you want us to comment, Beth, on the letter from from the summit?
Oh, I'm working on that and we'll have finalized comments for the next meeting.
Perfect. All right, yes, Penny?
I know that this is not specifically a PNC issue, but a shout-out to the public workers that have been plowing the streets. This was particularly difficult because of all the ice and the cold. And I think they've been doing a phenomenal job, so just a public shout-out to them.
Oh, that's nice.
Very nice. Thank you for that.
Very good, yes. February's going to be a monster month.
All right, if there are another commission comments, moving on to public input?
I'll be Jane.
Hi, BJ.
Hello, but no comments. Oh, thank you, okay. All right, if there's nothing else, if I may have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll move.
Bob, thank you.
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody.
But I'm sorry, who was the second? Penny. Thank you, Penny.
Who makes all the motions? Penny and I.
Hey, come on, like.
And Rob, it is nice to see you back at the meeting. Even though you've been here, it's nice to see you.